Why would you say please, after they told by a citizen?
Well, nobody would hear that.
Sorry, gunshots loud.
What would you do is put a flop camera to, you know, like in, in, uh, Chicago. It tells them, they can distinguish between a gunshot and a. I'm sorry, come on, that's what I'm saying, I got it warm for you. God lord, these people just get mad about anything. How you doing? Well, Mayor, my speech might be a little shorter than I thought, because a lot of it was gonna be.
Okay.
To that side of the. So where is that side?
That's right.
We're not gonna complain.
Councilman, I didn't know, I asked him, please come on in.
There, there, hey. How you doing?
I'd like to call our meeting to order. Please stand for indication. Heavenly Father, we so blessed and we thank you for this day. Lord, we ask that you order our steps in this meeting. Let us say and do whatever is good in your name, and for the good of, good of our citizens, Lord. Lord, we ask that you bless each person that's here individually, and Lord bless all people here that are present here in this meeting collectively. These are many blessings to be asking in your name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice.
Thank you all. I would like to welcome each of you to our council meeting, although we had to adjust our time, because we have a lot of things going on this month. We have upcoming, uh, um, meetings for some of us, so thank you all for being present. Also, I would like to take this time to say Happy Fathers' Day. To all the fathers, and to the fathers too. And I, this, I would like to read a portion of this poem that reads Dad. He never looks for praise, he's never want to boast. He just goes on working quietly for the ones he loves the most. Happy Fathers' Day. I too would like to take this time to thank you all in the city and the citizens, who called me and my family during the passing of my brother, and for the Johnson family. And I ask that you continue to pray for us, and that we really appreciate your calls, your prayers, your thoughts. Thank you all very much for your condolences, expressions of condolences. Our attorney, Attorney Cougar is absent right now, but, uh, he should be coming out in on the meeting later on, and whenever he comes in, we'll make that adjustment for his report. We have two special guests who we ask to be on the agenda, Mr. Turley and, and Mr. Hudson. Mr. Turley, could you please come?
Thank you for having, having me again. Was here about six months or so ago. I'm here to, um, appeal the, uh, place, the, the place on Holland, uh, speed bump. The, I've lived there for many, many years, uh, where I am now, never had any speed bumps. I wasn't happy about all the speed bumps that individuals requested in the rest of my neighborhood. And then when they put one on the street that I drive on all the time, I got mad. So I got up a petition, got twenty-nine signatures. I thought the twenty-nine signatures was much more important or valuable than just one person asking for a speed bump. But they approved the other speed bump and said I had to wait six months. So I think I waited longer than that. So I've got my petition to be, that I'm requesting to be folded on, to remove the speed bump on Holland. I also wanted to mention a comment or two about downtown. I think that, uh, the city and, we're in pretty desperate shape of downtown. A lot of empty buildings. I, I even got copies of every property on South Dewey from tax people, because I wanted to check on the status of the taxes. But that's, well, not why I'm mentioning it now, I'm mentioning it because we got so many empty buildings. And I don't know what the ordinance is regarding that, if there is one, but there should be one on maintenance of the buildings. And there should be some kind of effort to assist or do something to get an empty building, something in the empty building or to change hands of the owners. And the only other thing I've got is my new, new neighbor that bought Howard Grubbs' house. I'm not protesting the peacocks, I'm protesting that they have two large storage sheds. She brought a, an extra large storage shed which gives her two, and I was just told today by another neighbor that, that they, they could not have two, two of those on their property. So that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Turley, as far as the speed bump removal, we'll get back with you on that. And the peacocks, um, we ask Chief Finch, our co-enforcer, to come by and, uh, do an assessment on that. We'll get back with you on that.
Yeah, I'm just protesting the storage sheds.
Okay, right, well, well, whatever Chief comes back, we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Okay, and, um, downtown, I ask Mr. Angie, and Ms. Angie, would you please respond?
Yeah, I have it in my report, if that's okay, when I do my report, I'll update everybody on that.
All right, thanks very much. Thank you, Mr. Turley. Mr. Hudson?
Mayor, and, uh, thank you, County Manager, uh, for allowing me to, uh, to come and present this, uh, situation that I have. I have also have, can I pass these around, let y'all look at it while I'm talking? We have a situation, uh, at the, uh, Montezuma Church of Christ, and, uh, and I have, uh, uh, the County Manager. But I just wanna read some of the stuff that I have, and then, uh, while y'all are looking at the pictures. Being a representative on behalf of the Montezuma Church of Christ, in reference to the wall, which you decide, uh, devised, the Montezuma Cemetery and the church building. You know, there's a wall, you know, uh, that's located, uh, the church building is located on four oh five Otho Road, Montezuma, Georgia. I would like to thank everyone for the opportunity to present this situation. I'm Donald Hudson Senior, the Assistant Minister at the, uh, Montezuma Church of Christ. We have previously addressed it, this situation, Mayor Johnson, uh, she along with, uh, the City Manager, Mayor, uh, Fulgur, and members of this cemetery. You know, we appreciate y'all having this cemetery surveyed and assessed the issue at hand. The wall erosion running water from the cemetery, that's what the issue is, uh, at this particular time. We know that the cemetery, uh, belongs to the city, and, uh, the wall, you know, currently belongs to us. But the cement, the water, uh, you know, it's, it's a higher, the cemetery is a higher elevation than, than the church building. And, you know, of course, when it rains, you know, where the water gonna go, it's gonna go to the lowest point. And the wall is there, and it's, it's, uh, it's washing certain sections of the wall down. So, uh, uh, it separates, you know, uh, we're neighbors, you know, we don't look at it like, uh, our personal, you know, homes, or, or we're neighbors. You know, the church building and the cemetery, we're neighbors. So, uh, we have an issue at hand, you know, which is the water erosion and dirt. And, uh, we're here to see, can we, can we work together as neighbors? You know, I, I understand that, uh, you know, it's, it's not a, uh, uh, who, who problem that it is, or, or, you know, I wanna, I'm not worried about it, that's your issue, or whatever, whatever. If, you know, if the church don't do anything about the situation, it's not gonna help the situation. You know, if the city, you know, we, what we want, we wanna combine, uh, the church and the city to help. You know, uh, see if we eliminate the problem, what, you know, whatever we need to do to, uh, eliminate the, uh, erosion of dirt. Because we have, uh, it's our wall, we, you know, we, we erected the wall years ago, and, uh, in certain sections that, uh, the wall is down because of the dirt, you know, the rain that washed the dirt pressing up against the wall. We have, we have came and we, uh, we reinforced the wall and everything, and still, it's, it's, it's not gonna do any good until we get, I know the city has more resources, and of course, more money than we do. And so we wanna, we wanna kinda do like a joint effort, you know, if y'all would, to, uh, kinda help us and assist us in, uh, fixing this situation that we have. Because, uh, if we don't fix it, eventually the dirt gonna wash away and, and you'll see vaults. And that's, and that's not what we want, you know, anyone, no one, to be, you know, exposed. So, you know, if we don't fix the problem, that's what gonna happen. It might not happen this year, might not happen two or three years from now. But it's gonna happen if we don't fix it. And I think if, my thing is, it's always best to fix something, why isn't it a minimum? Still, why, why wait till, you know, you have graves exposed, and then it's gonna be, you know, you look, y'all probably have family members coming in, then still just Donald Hudson, you know, coming in. You know, and that'll be, you know, you don't wanna let it get to that point. So, uh, that's what, that's, that's, that's my thing today, and I'm glad that y'all allowed me to come and speak on it, uh, because, uh, I'm thinking, uh, from the water, uh, maybe we might be able to get some kind of drainage system to lay down so the water, we're not just running the wall, or just, we could turn that water and turn it and let it go into the flint. That would, that would eliminate a whole lot of problems on our end for the building. You know, because we, uh, right now, we have water settling up on the church building, and it's not good. You know, for the termites and, you know, wood rot, you know, we just, it's an issue that, you know, that I think, you know, that we could partnership and work this thing out, and, uh, you know, with the church. You know, we're not asking, you know, for y'all to take on the whole responsibility, but we asking that y'all will help assist us in whatever we need to do to solve this situation. It's a great task, and it needs, it needs to be done, it needs to be fin- fixed, it really do, it needs to be fixed. And, uh, whatever, you know, that y'all, you know, the knowledge, someone might have some, you know, some knowledge that can give us to, to fix the situation. But the situation needs fixing, and I'm here tonight to cry out to the city, you know, on behalf of the church, for y'all help. You know, and, and we can, you know, we appreciate anything that y'all would do to assist us to fixing this problem, because it need to be fixed. And, uh, we, we, we have tried, we have, uh, the wall come down, we, we put back up, reinforce it. And, you know, we don't have any control over God's weather, you know, for the rain, so, you know, when the rain comes, it's gonna wash. So if we can kinda get, you know, heads together and work on this thing together, I think it will benefit both of us, the city and the church, you know, if y'all be willing to work with us. Any kind of help that y'all can give us, any kind of assistance, knowledge, or what we could do, uh, to solve this problem. Because from years to come, it's, it's, it's gonna grow bigger, it's gonna be a bigger problem than it is now. And if, and if we don't fix the wall, you know, everything that's there gonna, it's gonna continue to wash. And, uh, you're gonna have, uh, graves exposed, and we don't want that, we don't want that. So we, you know, our hands are not tied, but they are at a point that where we need some help. And I'm the type of person that, if I can't do something by myself, I'm, I'm, I ask somebody to help me. And that's what I'm doing tonight, crying out to the city for help. I'm not demanding anything, I'm just crying out for help. If we can get some assistance, knowledge, whatever we can, monetary assistance greatly. Because we know the city have more resources than we do, and, uh, you know, more connections. And, uh, it will be a win-win for both sides if we, uh, partnership and get, you know, get that, uh, fixed. You know, the pictures I took, pictures are, they're, you know, they're, they're really, you know, they're, 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 they're kinda scary pictures to me, because, you know, when I'm at, in the church building, I have a window. And when I'm up speaking, I can look and see the, and see the graves. And eventually, the grave is gonna be on the, you know, right there on us. We have like, uh, I think it's like four, maybe eight feet from the corner of our building to, uh, a grave, some family member's grave. And, uh, it's kinda scary, because, uh, eventually, there's gonna be, it's not gonna be any dirt around those vaults if we, if we don't fix it. So, like I said, I'm crying out tonight for help. You know, anyone is welcome to come in Montezuma Church of Christ, just come and look. You know, the pictures might not do justice, you know, for us coming actually looking. If y'all could just come down and look and see what I'm talking about, you know, maybe y'all consider giving us some help. I thank y'all for, for y'all time, and, uh, hope and praying that we can, uh, partnership and get this situation handled.
And thank you very much, Mr. Hudson, for your, um, elaborate concerns and your expression, but there's no way we can give you an answer tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
And I want you to know, by no means, we have ignored your, your, you coming to us and, and expressing this. But we, we, it has to be looked in, in more in depth, and you said tonight, coming together, this is the first time.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe there has to be a come for the sake of the council.
Yes, ma'am.
There has to be a come to the table meeting.
Right.
And if anything, a proposal from you as to what the church, not to say that we, that we do, agree to do this right now, but a proposal from you representing the church as to what you all can do.
Yes, ma'am.
We, we talking about finances.
Yes.
So, uh, we'll have to, um, lead up the council, uh, further discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll have to get back with you.
Correct.
And, and Mr. Fulgur, let me ask you at this time. And, and also, um, I always get out there with my feet in the dirt. I have gone out there and walked, and when you first came to us, we, some of us got together and did a, an eye assessment of everything, and we have empathy for you, for that. But, you know, right now, we just didn't jump over you to the church part and take, you see what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
But you, you presenting yourself in an elaborate way now, so put, put, give, give, give us a proposal, let's, let's talk about it.
Okay.
So, um, Mr. Fulgur, is there anything you can add to this?
No, I, I think that, uh, like I said, you know, we've, we've already been out there. So there are some ideas that we can, that we can certainly help.
Okay.
Uh, with the ideas of, of where the water might can go, how much the city can give you, uh, uh, can help with, we'll find out what the council talks about, but we're, we're definitely there to, uh, to see if we can help.
Okay.
So, I, I, I understand, we've been there, we know the water situation. Uh, you know, just like you said, it's above, it's below.
Right.
So it was dug out, you know, in a, kind of in a hole there, so the water's the only place it can go, so.
Yes, sir. All right, so without show, thank y'all for.
Good to see you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Good to see you too.
Good to meet you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Department of Hades, uh, meeting, if you would, reports, economic development, two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens. Um, the park is finished for now, Gladys Fair Park, we've got all the playground equipment in at this point, but we will be looking to see, we left room in the fence to add, so we may add another couple of pieces. Um, we've had citizens already asking about that. Um, as far as, I'll go ahead and address, uh, Mr. Turley. Um, council, we've been, um, partnering and dealing with this, and so council came to an agreement with the county, with David Parrott. And so literally, um, last Thursday, I met with David, and we went to all the buildings downtown, and so we're about to run code and, uh, building inspection on nine buildings. So I have nine, and David's typing up, I wrote out all the notes with him, and we went around and did this, and looked at the buildings and took pictures. So there are a few others that, you know, I think if I reach out to these owners, they'll probably do some cleaning up once they realize this is what we're doing, so we're starting the process. It'll be, end up being the exact same process that we did on the three buildings that we demoed. It's, it'll go through the court system, they'll get certified letters, then they have to make a decision on cleaning their property up or moving forward. So that we, that's been in the works for a while, and finally made an agreement with, um, the county commissioners to use David for that. So, so we're working on that, um, so expect to see some changes hopefully soon.
Thank you.
The buildings were demoed, as you've seen, as you go through town, um, pretty successfully, just, you know, a little bit of damage, but not much. I've been in constant contact with, uh, um, Ms. Bertha in the Mexican store, we're finishing up some leaks with her. Um, spoke with Ray Friday at the tax office, and he didn't have any issues in his building, so that was really good. Um, so it turned out as good as it could be, considering we had to go through that process and remove the buildings. And I do have some ideas on that space, and it's just a matter of legally not owning some of it, but we're moving forward on that, and I, I'm thinking on it, so. Um, the bathrooms, you, you see pictures, are underway, the roof will start in the next day or so. Um, they're gonna turn out pretty good, and remove it pretty fast. Uh, we had a tree go through Henry Mack Park fence, and that's already been repaired and is completed. Um, AEP, I think I mentioned this to you guys, they did apply for the low-income housing tax credit on the property next to Tramazan. So fingers crossed that they get funded. Patty Bentley Stinson called me last week, and we were talking, and I said, I know you don't have much to do with DCA, but if you can, any little input you can, please, you know, push Montezuma for this development, it would really help us, because it would be forty units, so that would be great. Um, that's what I'll have, Mel will update you on the airport and some other things, but any questions for me?
Thank you, Angie. Someone hit the port for fire and emergency services, the absence of Chief Yoda. And the absence of Councilman Felton. Utilities update, public works, Superintendent Lonnie.
You're here, Mayor, Council. As you might see, we, uh, we have a lot of things in the fire, a lot of different things far as water leaks and holes, holes need to be addressed. So that's, that's what we're working on, we have a few taps, water taps, that is, and sewer taps, that we're in the midst of doing this week. And, uh, pretty much it's just work as usual. Uh, nothing, nothing outstanding, um, but, uh, if you have any questions for me, I'm free to answer. Any questions, concerns, any, I don't really have too much. All right.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Lonnie, did you look at the situation with the church and the wall?
I looked at the wall, yeah, I did. I didn't see the, um, erosion that he's talking about, the water, because we actually killed, no, I don't know if y'all know, but the water comes in, when it was some water to the cemetery, it came in right there by the wall. So we done killed the water, so the water that is eroding it.
It's rainwater.
It's rainwater coming down.
Is it running out of the cemetery, or where's it coming from?
Right now, I, I don't, I, I'm assuming it's just low gravity tips it down.
Okay, I didn't see that detail.
I mean, I, I haven't seen it like piled up like behind the graves and it's moving, I haven't seen that part. I just know that's, you can tell where it's coming down, it's eroding. I just believe if they get the wall up, and we put some dirt right there on the backside, get the quality wall up, put some dirt on the backside, that should kill that erosion issue, but you gotta kill the wall.
Need to put some drain tunnel behind it, making, well, I don't know, we're gonna get into all that.
Yes.
All right.
Superintendent Lonnie, Water Service, Superintendent Terry?
Terry. Terry's at, uh, uh, baseball civic duties, so as he would normally say, everything's fine. But we have a little bit of problem with the well down, right down below us. Uh, the pump fell off and fell down, uh, way down, they did retrieve it, so we're gonna be able to save that motor, but we do have to realign it. But one of the things about our, we have two water plants, we have four wells, so our redundancy is for our city, our little small city is, is, is great, because we lose a well, we still have three more, so. Uh, that, that, that's good news. Other than that, everything is going really well, and our sewage plant as well.
Councilman Hall.
I said each figure, when I was gonna ask you.
Okay, all right. Um, public properties, um, Council Lady Tewks, and then, uh, Mr. Fox. Yeah, then that too. Yes, of course. Mr. Fox?
Okay, it's good to see you again.
Yes, likewise.
Uh, first thing I'll mention is, I mentioned, I think back in April, we changed the library's schedule. We're open from six to seven now on Mondays and Tuesdays. So in May and up to this week, we have had people in the library during those hours almost every day. So real happy to see that. Um, in May, we had four hundred and sixty-six people come into the library. That's about a one hundred person increase over last year. So far in June, yesterday and today, we had a hundred and twelve people come in. We had a program this morning, it's our first summer program, we had about forty-five attend. So that was a really good turnout. Um, we have ten more programs for kids in June and July, so we're really looking forward to seeing the kids come in. In our summer reading program so far, we've had about forty kids to sign up, we've had five adults. And so that's a good number so far, and it'll increase a little bit. On May twenty-first, we had the Public Health on Wheels that came to the library. What they do is some immunizations and some other health checks. Um, I was kind of disappointed with the numbers, we only had about ten people participate, but I was happy that they had been here, and I've already put in the request for them to come back in November. It's a great opportunity just to go and get your blood pressure checked, some other health things, especially if they can come back in November and get a flu shot, so I'm excited about that. Things are going well at the library, thank you.
Thank you. And I was gonna ask you about the screen and van, but you, you were there. And I wanted to stop, just give a blood pressure check, but I was in a hurry, and it was up, so I don't know. But thank you very much for that. We just have to publicize it more whenever it's time.
And saying that, we had it on Wednesday, which is one of our lower attendance days. I've requested for them to come on Monday or Tuesday, which are our two higher number days.
Thank you very much. Council Lady Tewks, thank you. Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, you all very much. Police department, Sheriff Finch.
How you doing, Mayor and Council?
All right.
Citizens, I guess pretty much tonight gonna be pretty much everything, we've got four now. Um, pretty much I email each one of y'all our report, um, just from the last council meeting. Um, pretty much I email each one of y'all our report, um, just from the last council meeting, uh, we wrote two hundred and twenty-five citation, uh, with that being a hundred and fifty-two, uh, issued citation in seventy-three mornings. Um, pretty much seeing the crime rate, that pretty much staying pretty much low, and that pretty much, you know, outstanding, pretty much with that. Also, in my, in that fact, what I include to y'all is a six month from this year, almost compared to the, the same month, six months from last year comparison in that time. And you can pretty much see the crime rate pretty much, um, more than it was last year. Um, I also included, y'all, the amount of money and revenues that pretty much what we don't, we have made it, and pretty much what we pretty much grabbed it out. So that's pretty much my report on that, each one of you should have a copy of that, I emailed it to you, anybody have any question about it? The next thing, what I wanna talk to you about, um, the National Guard, um, they are now in the department taking bids on getting some stuff, I mean, letting them in, changing doors, they're changing the lighting on that. Once they get these bids and everything, and then an actual report going on, and then they can start looking at spending that four hundred and, I think sixty thousand dollars that they got to renovate that building. That'll be another building in the city, pretty much what we can utilize, you know, for other than the Preston Williams Center and current what they're using at the Tremont Center. And the one they got in over there, so I'll let y'all know more about that as they come in and they just looking at bids on bidding things out on that, is that what they're going on. Um, the next thing I got is this year, we did give out a, a scholarship for a thousand dollars, uh, to the Miss Janay, um, uh, Westbury. Basically, what she had to do, write an essay as well, I wanna be in law enforcement, and she was the one that won that scholarship. And she gonna be going to Savannah State University, majoring in forensic science, so we did, pretty much, you know, we were excited about that. Next year, we're looking at giving out two, we got somebody else in mind that we're gonna give out two different scholarships next year, two thousand dollar scholarship, that's something we were looking to give out. Another thing that's coming up this pack, this commissary, um, we got the chief diploma program, the graduation will be held at Peach County this year. Because they got more students graduating than we do, and then plus, we don't have a facility to pretty much host it at a big graduation. So it gonna be done in Fort Valley this particular year. Also, we got some problem, you probably seen on Facebook, you probably seen some, um, some communication that went out in the newspaper talking about that, um, our major grant was not funded by the Trump administration, uh, extraction through the United Way. Um, it pretty much cost us ten thousand dollars to have that particular graduation, they had a student going into it and it's free. So pretty much I talked to the sponsor that I think I got the funding, that we can probably keep that program going on. Because we pretty much need, you know, people to still, you know, get their high school, so they looking at their, the parameters around it. And pretty much they'll make contact with Ms., uh, Ms. Mary, so hopefully we can go and keep that funding up a flow and pretty much, uh, pretty much get that, that going on. The next thing, what I'm actually, a couple of things that's on the council that, um, well, let me just talk to someone else. You probably seen a post, a post that were, that kinda went crazy on Facebook about the Four Walls. Let me just tell you pretty much what happened with that, those was not kids, those were grown men's. And they came from Fort Valley, they came from Garden Valley, they were riding on two forty, two twenty-four, they coming downtown, uh, doing Willy's downtown, out in Phillip Town, doing town. And everything about the Four Walls, we were trying to make contact with them and tell them to get off the road because they didn't have no helmets or anything like that. And basically, they wanted to outrun our cops. But basically, what we did is, we pretty much had told them, we don't, we're not finna chase them like that because we can go in the flock camera system and identify them, pretty much what we done. So, um, that's pretty much what it is, I know there's people saying, well, kids trying to have fun, nobody, that wasn't the issue of it. You probably seen the picture that, some of the pictures that we put up, all grown men's coming out here, riding out there on two twenty-four, I don't, two forty going by. Going, uh, the Garden Valley community, out there in that area, and, and just raising crazy, out there on the main road. So one of our guy, the reason why it was so important to us is, is each one of y'all called, and April of twenty twenty-three. We had some people doing the same thing on Four Walls out there in Allen Trail Park, and the Trail Park, um, he lost traction. Because those type vehicles are not made to be driven on the roadway, and this dude got killed out there on Allen Trail Park. So that's what we basically were trying to do, to stop people from getting hurt, and like I pretty much, we told our, our staff, not to push them like that. Because we didn't wanna push them in a situation and cause them to get hurt, but cause we know we can identify them on the flock camera. So that was the, that was the grits of it, and that's why we did what we did. Um, a couple of things that going on, I'm gonna present to y'all tonight, um, for a new radio, a temporary radio system. Uh, pretty much each one of, we've been talking about our current radio system, it's a pretty much a hit and miss. When our officer getting out the car, they might get, they might hit the nine-one-one center, they might not, and we've been going on this for three years. Um, pretty much to get everybody in here a grip, so understanding what we saying. The county is the one that responsible for our nine-one-one system and everything in the radio infrastructure of the nine-one-one center. Our stuff is outdated, we're still running, we're still running stuff back up in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety equipment with E-nine-one-one center. So, so you might call, the, the, the dispatcher might call, call the officer, the officer might not even hear the call. We might call, we get on, get on a call, and something going on, the officer might not hit the nine-one-one tower or whatever going on. Those are the issues that we've been trying to get addressed, to add it to it, the county, when, uh, county manager, uh, Kevin Lewis was there, he applied for a grant. He applied for a grant through the Sheriff, making kind of Sheriff Department, and we was awarded a hun, one million, one, one point four million dollars for a new radio system. This council been putting money in there because I probably say, it probably, we might have to pay some funds for that new reg, for that particular new radio, that particular new radio system. Well, we've been dancing around with that grant for three years, so they came back in and changed the grant. They said, well, we ain't need all this stuff for one point four million dollars, now we can get it for seven hundred thousand dollars. So now, you know how the federal government look, they saying, well, y'all got to re-rock the grant, and we'll remake some changes to this, uh, grant, and then we'll approve that. So they doing that, so now, due to everything else, the prices of that don't went up, and it now have one point six million dollars. So in other word, we going around and dangling around. So myself, Mel, the city manager, city clerk, Fire Chief Roy Yoder, and Mr. Jared Sutherland, we met with Sutherland ready. And I pretty much came with a plan, is it something that we can get temporary to make sure that the safety of our officers, to make sure when they get out that patrol car. Uh, if someone calling nine-one-one, we can get a response. Because I look at it like that, and the climate that we're in as law enforcement, you get out of car and somebody start throwing bullets at you. You wanna be able to, be able to contact somebody and pretty much hit that nine-one-one center when it came. So we brought in Sutherland, and they came in, they met with us, and they came up with a solution. Pretty much is how this solution work, um, the state is pretty much, is on the Harris system, that's a radio system, that's a, that's the more advanced system, the Harris system. That's what they pretty much, the state is pretty much on, state patrol is on that, um, corrections is on it. And basically what they do is, with the Harris system, they give a patch to everybody in the, every county in the state of Georgia. And that patch is free to the county. So basically what happened is, um, they presented it to, they presented it to the, to the county last month at they particular, at they particular work session. And from, I can't tell you why, but, but this is what happened. Um, when Sheriff Martin left the office, that night, the sheriff radio, how it been working? Honestly, they never had any, any communication, they don't have no radio communication. Basically, what they operating off of, our radio system, you know, because they need a radio system. So basically what happened is, you know, Roy had got a EMA frequency, and then what he did was, he loaded that frequency up so that the sheriff department could have a, a standalone radio system. Everybody follow me, because they, the sheriff department frequency is down, so he got a EMA repeater, so he put that up there. So what they did was, they programmed all the sheriff vehicles to that frequency. But the county said they wasn't going to put the cities on that frequency. So in other words, so now Sheriff Felton say that, well, he didn't wanna talk on that radio because normally he don't have a one, a two deputy worker. And if they get in a situation and they trying to talk on that particular radio frequency, they wasn't gonna have no communication with nobody, but the nine-one-one center. So basically, that's why, the reason why he's talking on our radio system currently right now. Everybody follow me, while we here, all right, so with that being said, Sutherland was going to put a patch on the county radio system. But it's down, but they were gonna put, they could put the patch, their patch, the county patch on the EMA system. Okay, but they still ain't got no communication, so basically what we decided to do is this, we need to solve this problem. So we met, and what we decided we wanted to do was to move forward and buy our own patch, and let me just tell you why. If we buy our own patch, we can still operate on our city frequency. Two, once the sheriff department patch frequency get back up, hopefully, then we'll have two patches in the county. And then if ours go down, we can use theirs, if theirs go down, they can continue to use ours. Everybody follow me on that, so with that being said, this is the walk and talk, I'm gonna give you a test on it right now. This walk and talk is very important because when we at the, um, when we try to communicate in the school. When I try to communicate and talk to the people in the school from our walk and talk, if we in the, inside that particular building. If we inside that particular building, if we in that particular building, we, our walk and talkers can't get out. If we in some part of this some community, our walk and talkers can't get out. So we were looking at something, what can we can do until the county figure out, you know, what they can do with this grant. So basically what he told us is, if we buy our own patch, we'll be able to, all the cities will be able to communicate, the sheriff will still be able to communicate with us as well. We have great courage, we can still, we can communicate with the sheriff, I mean, uh, we can communicate with other surrounding counties now. Because right now, we can't communicate with them because of the fact that our radio system is pretty much outdated. So we can't communicate with state patrol, we can't communicate with nobody but us. This new system, what we just tried, once we buy that patch, we'll be able to communicate with everybody, I'm finna get you that sample of this. Monizuma one, South County has something? But pretty much what we, um, pretty much how this thing works, is, oh, okay, I lost, I'm on now, sorry, I did. Monizuma one, South County has something? And with this thing, what we've been testing is that's South County, right there, you understand what I'm saying? Temple one, radio check, you understand what I'm saying? So we'll be able to talk to state patrol now, we'll be able to talk to everybody right now, these people running digital radio. We still running the analog radio, so with this on radio, we can be able still do our job and commute, and do it at a much cheaper price. Until the county can get their thing, we wanted to be able to say, if I hit my officer, get out this car and kill their radio for safety first, we need to hit a radio, they need, they need, they need to hit, somebody need to be answering the radio. So we asking y'all to approve that tonight, and pretty much I talked to them, we got, um, with them, the patch, it'll be here doing, they'll be installed a patch at the nine-one-one center the week of June the twenty-third. Anybody have a question? This is a temporary fix, this is a, this is a, this is a temporary fix until we can, till the county can figure out what we gonna do with the radio. But I'm firmly believing all the other city gonna fall through, once we get this up at, all the thing they gotta do is buy this radio. All the, only thing they gotta do is buy this particular radio, and this particular radio go call, this radio costs ninety-nine dollars. Right? Ninety-nine dollars. Yeah, thirty dollars. With this on radio, it doesn't matter, if my guys, if I'm in Alabama or Florida, I can still hit that nine-one-one center. I was in the school today, I went in the school today, and Ms. Harvey Jones was in the school as well, she was trying to talk on her cell phone. She had to walk out in the front of the building just to get out on her cell phone. She had to walk out the building, she had to walk out the building just to get on her cell phone. I was inside the building today with this walk and talk, talking to South County and the nine-one-one center. And it was funny, Sheriff Brian overheard me talking, go ahead, Monizuma one, we hear you cloudy clear in South County schools. So I'm just saying right now, we need a temporary fix, and we've been, all of us, there's something that I've been screaming to Mel and, and Mr. Jennifer about. That we got to figure out something, what we got to do for the safety of our office, so I'm asking y'all to support that. Also, what we did, we have, Jennifer, you wanna bring this up, about the, what we talked about in the work session, y'all gonna help with it?
I will, with the alcohol.
Okay, yes, you gonna do that?
I will.
Okay, all right, but anybody have any question?
I'd like to, while you're still up.
Uh, right before the meeting, we, me and Jennifer were talking to Roy Yoder, so best case scenario for the county to be able to get their system up and running, the best case scenario would be possibly six months. So we're talking about right now, um, everything that we need to get started, Jennifer, I think that we need to add the, if we, if you approve this. The preliminary is, is what you see on the thing, but, uh, the thirty dollars, fifteen radios, thirty dollars a month is four hundred and fifty dollars a month. That I don't think that we've got that.
I agree.
You got that added into fourteen thousand, that's for the first year?
Yes, for the first.
But every year after that, four, four, fifty-four hundred dollars a year after that, so, so best case scenario is six months. So I highly recommend that you please, uh, okay this. Because, uh, there, there's no reason in the world for, for this amount of money to have any of our officers with the possibility of not being able to reach the nine-one-one center when they're outside of their vehicle.
And while, while we in our meeting, then they meet, and Roy just asked for twenty thousand dollars to do a, a, uh, bringing a consultant to study the nine-one-one system, what we got, and they pretty much declined it right now because of the fact that they said that they ain't got enough information.
That was county or us?
County, they don't mean now, they mean right now. And that's what we be, and that's what we keep going by, you know, it's, you know, they pretty much told us, you know, I just hate to say it, they pretty much had told us, well, we gonna have this stuff, we'll front some of this money, we gonna have this thing up and running by July, uh, twenty twenty-five. Well, next month gonna be July twenty twenty-five, and we haven't even got started with pretty much where we gonna go with it. So I'm just saying, one concern, that when we can't reach out, my, our guys cannot reach out, and they been documenting that our guys are having a hard time reaching the nine-one-one center. So I think that gonna be problematic, somebody go home and sit. Um, from what I got, we gonna have, we, every month, we meet on the first Wednesday of the month, and the update where we at with the jails is this. They got, before we can do anything, they got to go in and put in a fire system, fire arms, and all of that. And then that got to get come back in and get inspected. And then, that got to get come back in and get inspected by the Fire Marshal's Office. And once that get inspected by the Fire Marshal's Office, then they will tell the county to go ahead and start renovating the jail, or no, y'all need to look at building a new jail. So before you can do anything, that got to be taking place. So, now.
Is that happening though?
Now, I'm finna bring that to that point. They paid for it, and then all of a sudden, um, about two or three weeks after Sheriff Felton got in the office, they get a blitz, they brought in a team of people, they start working inside the jail and start doing some stuff. Then all of a sudden, now they ain't going into the jail, they sending back one person into the jail. You, you understand what I'm saying? Whereas if they would've did to me, I just think that, I was so happy, I was thinking that they finna blitz it out and go ahead and complete the work. Then they can tell Sheriff Felton, hey, give, give, give some direction as to what we gonna do with this jail. And that's where we at. So to answer the question, we can do nothing until they get through installing that. The Fire Marshal got to come in and tell us yea or nay. So if they say nay, pretty much that seventy, thinking around seventy-two thousand dollars that they don't pay to go in there to do that, that just gone. So that's pretty much where we at, that's, that's the, that's the, that's the, that's the place where we at with it.
We have to make a decision from, because I mean, that's, you gonna lose seventy-two thousand dollars. There's no guarantees at all from the Fire Marshal for what you do.
It ain't gonna be no guarantee, once they get the fire, once they get the, the fire, um, the system in place, once they get the system in place, then they'll be able to move forward that way. And then, it's gonna be, the only person they gonna have to finally say so on that is the Fire Marshal's Office. And they can tell them, yeah, and then what the plan's gonna be from there is, they gonna open up one half of the jail and try to get some of our people back, uh, with some of these people that coming in with these first appearance, that the sheriff know ain't got to do decent transport. And then, if somebody got to stay extended period of time, then they'll let those pe- people stay out of, out of jail. But till even, we can even move to that point, it all, it all, everything gonna be dependent upon what the Fire Marshal's Office say. That's where we at with it.
Thank you, Chief, for such a thorough report. Attorney Cougar?
I have the nothing else.
Okay, thank you very much. Personnel, financing, budget, Mr. Carter?
Good evening. We have been very busy working on ordinances. Um, the first priority has been alcohol ordinance, then the peddlers ordinance, the food truck ordinance, and blight ordinance. So hopefully by next meeting, the peddlers, the food truck, and the blight will be ready. That's our goal. Peddlers and food being priority. There've been a few hiccups with the garbage pickup, so we've gotten a lot of complaints specifically about medical walkouts. There's been a transit, transition with, um, GFL, but we think they got that all handled. So if you get any complaints, please have them call the office, we'll look into it.
What is a medical walkout?
Where they have. Um, budgets are in full swing. The department head notebooks are due Friday, June the sixth, and our first full council budget meeting will be Thursday, July tenth, at five fifteen P M. So if you can't make it, let me know, so we can get that changed. We have three seats up for election this year. Qualifying dates are August eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. We received a wellness grant this year from G M A, and we're going to purchase, we've already purchased, an AED for this building. So Mister, um, Mister George, the county E N S director, he'll be here to teach, um, AED and C P R training, um, to city employees, if anyone would like to be part of that, let me know.
What is AED, you just first to?
It's a video later. Uh, most of your, most of your public buildings are required to have those. L N I G, if you look with your packets, there is a summary of L N I G costs. We use that to apply for the L N I G money, which we already have for this year. And the next step is to apply for the L R A. So I believe that's gonna cover it. I talked to Lance this morning, he didn't, um, he hasn't responded back, but we should be applying for that L R A money this week. So that doesn't mean that those streets are in stone, it just means that's what we need to apply for this funding. We have three years, we can hold on to it up to three years. So we probably would need to know maybe around August, if those are the streets we wanna go with, or if we wanna hold it. We just have to take a look at those, and I'll have some more updates once we get the L R A money and find out how much they're gonna fund this year. We have several items on the agenda. We've got our resolution to rename Don, the Bond Street to Willie J Larry Street in honor of Mayor Willie James Larry. We have a resolution to call for a referendum to allow the people to decide if they would like to approve or disapprove Sunday sales of on-premises, distilled spirits, beer or wine. This is only where fifty percent or more of the gross income of the establishment is from the sales of food. And we have two emergency expenses, one is for the demolition of downtown. We had the Josie's Building, um, in our budget. The other two, um, had to come down due to court order. So we've got those, that will be, a budget amendment will be made to General Farm. To approve the emergency expense, uh, to rebuild the engine on fire truck number twelve, it was down. Revised alcohol ordinance, so in this alcohol ordinance, what I have changed, we have added hours of sales, that limits the hours of sales for package sales, and also beverages by the drink for on-premises sales. So I will read over those when we go over the agenda. And there's also been another one put in here for, um, minors, to address minors. We will be doing an overhaul of all of the alcohol ordinance, but these were the main things we need to go ahead and get in there for now. And then Chief talked about the radio system, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, thanks. Mister Fuller, just, city manager's report.
Well, Jennifer says my speeches are good, but they're short. So y'all might not like this, but. So Pastor Hudson, thank you for your comments on the church. Always Ed, was, it's a pleasure to see you here, and whether you get, whether you get your way or not, I don't know, but we, we appreciate you, every, you're keeping us honest a lot. And I wanna, I wanna thank our librarian too, my gosh. What a difference, you know, to, to hear the updates of great things that are happening down there, so, thank you, sir. So, one thing I wanna go over tonight a little bit is, a, a, a lot of times, I don't think the council in, in, in once a month, and the little thing, you know, the, the, the things that we do, how, how much y'all make a difference that you don't really realize? So what I've done is, I've kinda gone back and chronicled lies, especially, uh, the council that's been on for the last four years and they're up for reelection. Mayor Neely was also a part of that council before she became mayor. Some of the great things that have happened, uh, in that time, uh, we had the airport extension, to five hundred feet. I mean, we added five hundred feet to make it five thousand, uh, feet. So what does that do? That really, it just opens up the corridor for a lot of corporate, uh, organizations to be able to come into our airport. So it, it, that was two million dollars. So also, we just bought, built a new terminal area at the airport, that was two million dollars. So we just built a pipeline to the Flint River, uh, for our effluent to get the, uh, get our wastewater, uh, clean wastewater out of the watershed, and in, directly into the Flint River. So that protects, and Georgia, uh, the E P D actually wrote a letter thanking the city of Monozuma for, for our actions of, of making those things happen to, to protect, uh, the wetlands. So what that does for the city of Monozuma though, decades, for decades to come, is gonna to allow us and, and our wastewater plant to be able to put effluent, uh, out that, that E, even when E P D starts making it harder and harder, uh, that we're, we're gonna be in compliance. So this, this money that we have spent, in fact, it was paid for one hundred percent by, uh, Taylor County. So there was absolutely zero sense of tax money that went into this two million dollar project. And it's gonna be there for us and, and for the, for the city for decades to come. And, and, all that saying is that you had to vote on all, on, all these projects that are going forward. A lot of the airport, uh, a lot of that money was federal money, state mon- money, and, and there was also local money, so. So the city of Monozuma stands alone in that airport. So we're, we're a city of a little less than thirty-one hundred people, but we have, there, there's probably no other city that supports an airport that has fewer people. So you are to be congratulated for, for making that happen. Also, the C D B G projects, we've had two of them since the, the last council was voted in for the last four years. Two water pipelines in the, in, in the Philip, uh, area, that's two million dollar projects. So, uh, that's eight million dollars worth of projects that have gone forward, uh, just under your guidance in the last three and a half years. Also, what we did downtown, that was, uh, you know, you authorize, uh, the demolition of, 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 of dangerous buildings downtown. Fortunately, we, we had the revenue to be able to, to make that happen, so we're very fortunate in that situation. Okay, those were the things that kind of in the past, but what we have coming up, we have a, a five hundred thousand gallon water tank project, uh, that's been approved by G F A. Eight hundred thousand of that three million dollar project is going to be, uh, eight, uh, forgive, eight hundred thousand of it. So, uh, we'll, we'll be financing the rest of it for twenty or thirty years, but it's definitely necessary, the, uh, water tanks that we have are, are getting old and, and they're too, they're not tall enough for what we need, uh, so we'll end up with just two five hundred thousand gallon water tanks. And so we're, the, the maintenance on, on, on the two, uh, will be, that will be taking out all the three or four that are, that you see standing that need to come down now, uh, because of their age. And some of them are only a hundred thousand gallons, so. So those are projects that you already have okayed on the G F A. Also, we've got the airport T hangars, and also the, which is a one point two million dollar project. You've got, uh, the airport runway rehab, it's a five hundred sixty thousand dollar project. These will be done, you should see those finished by the end of August. We're also with, with Angie, and we have the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing. So those are projects that, uh, enables us to go back to the community development block grants and, and, and be able to apply every year for those, uh, C D B G projects to, to put our better, more infrastructure in. Uh, Angie also touched on, uh, the downtown, which is, you know, not many small towns have a program where, like, what Angie does, is, is looking after the future of Monozuma. We've been working, and she's been working for two or three years, trying to get the county, trying to figure out how we can save the buildings downtown. And we do not want to happen what, what, what just happened. We just spent four hundred thousand dollars to be able to unfortunately, uh, tear down buildings that if we had done this ten years ago, um, with the blight program and partnered with code enforcement, we could've gone in, because what, what she's gonna do is, you're gonna bring these buildings before the municipal court, and municipal court's gonna, uh, give authorization, uh, a court order to be able to go into those buildings and inspect them in code enforcement. So hopefully that's gonna be able to put the owners, uh, to getting these buildings fixed before they start falling, falling in. So also, we partnered, uh, with, uh, and the city council did this, you partnered with the land bank. Last year, you donated twenty, or you gave twenty-five thousand dollars for, uh, to the land bank. They, uh, took eight homes that were blight on Martin Luther King, and those properties have been, uh, cleaned up, and those properties have been sold. There's actually, they've been sold, so they're back on the tax digest, number one. And they're also, there's gonna be one, we know, building, uh, a new home is gonna be built on one of those properties, and you've got some mobile homes coming in, and the properties are cleaned up. So the area is looking, is looking great. And you have also, uh, pledged a hundred thousand more dollars to the land bank for, for blight to be able to clean up more blighted areas. And those areas will, will come as we identify where the, where the next. One of the reasons that the Martin Luther King, I wanna make sure that everybody know, the Martin Luther King area was selected first for, for the blight, was that we had, uh, people that wanted to invest in the O D F Douglas School, they came down and looked, and were hoping to, uh, take that and, uh, make it a fifty-five plus, uh, place for, for people to live. That did not work out, but one of the commitments was from the city to start cleaning that area up, and we still, possibility that you still have that opportunity if somebody else wanted to come in and invest. But they weren't, they wanted to see us start having that area cleaned up if, on the black side of it. So that's, that's why we started there, and we're, we're the next hundred thousand dollars for the blight, where we start. We'll, we'll figure that one out. Some great things that have happened downtown, uh, with our revolving loan program. You had Austin went down, we call it McKenzie Mall, you, you, you know where the exercise, where everybody exercises at. He has taken that building, he has saved the two-story building, along with the D D A, Downtown Development Authority, has also helped him and also the revolving loan, being able to save that building, which is a historical building. That, so the whole building is, is being renovated as we speak, and so that's a work in progress. Also, the Hills Building, Roberto, as, you know, he owns the Mexican restaurant, and his, his, his idea was to make that the Italian restaurant. But because of the building next to his on the Hills Building, water was coming in there, so he's backed off on that until we can get, he can get that corrected. But he has already purchased the building next door, which used to be, uh, the old Georgia Power Aztequia, Mexican restaurant, he's, he's actually gonna make that the Italian, Italian restaurant. If you go back behind the building now, he, you'll see stacks of bricks, we're trying to save those bricks, and he's stacking them up so he can build a, a nice, uh, porch in the back, and, and we will be able to say, you know, these bricks were from, you know, from a hundred and twenty-year-old buildings that was saved from the downtown. So we look forward and, and for Roberto and wish him well. So, another. So another thing I want to mention is a lot of new businesses is coming, I mean, come to town. Why, why do they come? And they come here because of y'all. It's because what you've done, what you've, what you've been able to do with our police department, what you've been able to do with the flock cameras, what you've been able to, what, when Eric Finch gets up and tells you that every, every year, I mean, for ten years, the, the, you know, our police report every, every, every month, you know, the numbers go down. So, so I think that we have one of the best police forces in, in, in the, in the state, at least in the state, if not in the, in the United States. But what that does is that allows these businesses to come and want to come. So, you know, the Tramazin Jacks, the Mexican restaurant left Aztequia, they came back. You got Roberto is going to build the Italian restaurant. You got new construction going on with the laundromat and, and the spirits store that, you know, some people might, it's going to be a laundromat, it's also going to be a restaurant, it's also be a, a convenience store. People don't just come and invest millions of dollars in the city of three thousand without knowing that, you know, we've got a great city council that's got their back and, and looking after their best interest. Jennifer Momo, sir. I'm going to wrap it up. Does anybody got any, any questions? I'm sure. Sit down and be quiet. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fordham, for that timely update on things that are going on in our city and things, progress that we have to look forward in the future. And thank you, councilperson. Any council, council comments? Any comments?
I just have a question for Jennifer about the holidays and trash picks up, pickups. Do we have a schedule of when they pick up trash? Because I know there was one particular holiday, I think it was President's Day, that they did pick up trash. But I knew they wouldn't, would not want to pick up trash on Memorial Day. But is their schedule when they, you know, when a holiday come, when the, is their schedule?
They don't give us one, but I can contact them and see if they will, and maybe we can use our text my gov system or something to get that out there.
Normally they'll come the next day.
But that particular holiday, they, they came on the holiday, the banks and everything were closed, but they didn't pick up trash.
Yeah, they don't lose none, but we'll, we'll ask for that. I'm sure they'll want this.
Any citizen comments?
I think the trash pickup is excellent.
Any other? At this time? Ma'am?
Yeah, Lani, I'm over there, stand back here.
Come on, you.
I can stand back here. Well, my name is.
You come, you come on up?
Mayor, council, citizen. My name is Tara Crosby, I stay in TE Moon, I stay in public housing. I have been having an issue with my water bill for approximately ten years now. I stay in a three-bedroom, I went from a two-bedroom, one-bath with my water bill being a hundred and forty-five dollars a month staying in Pine Lake Apartments. When I had my second child in twenty-fourteen, moved from a two-bedroom to a three-bedroom, one-bath, I still carry a one, a hundred and thirty-one dollars, sometimes one fifty-five, sometimes a hundred and eleven dollars staying in a three-bedroom, one-bath apartment. I have called housing, it's like it's a tit-for-tat game. I have reached out to the city, Mr. Lani, thank you, he has came out and looked and made sure I didn't have any leaks. They changed the floater in the toilets, I got a new, um, tub, they put a new tub in. But I'm still having a high bill. I go to the city, I asked them about it, the people in the office, they just keep ignoring me. Like my bill be high every month. I'm having to choose whether to pay this high bill or feed my kids. I'm a single parent, two kids, I work a job, I work, I go to work every day. I work five days a week off two when my kids are in school. So I basically be eight-thirty to three, we're not in the home. Now, do I do my little night cleaners and stuff? Yes, I do, but I feel like that the bill is too outrageous. It is, it's, it's too high for me to have one bedroom, well, one bathroom and three bedrooms and just two kids. I don't have a pool, there's no leaks. This bill has traveled with me from Pine Lake to TE Moon. It's ge, it's getting higher by the month. And I'm, 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 I'm being honest with you, I cannot hardly afford the water bill. And we get only one extension a year, one. And once you use that one extension, then you got to pay it by the tenth. So I'm asking if anybody could help look at the meter or something because it's getting unbearable for me and my children.
I have a few questions. So you say there's not a leak?
No, ma'am.
There hasn't been a leak?
No.
Okay. We will look onto the beacon system and see why. The beacon system pulls all of your usage and tells you when you use it, how much, everything. So if you talk to Ms. P about that, because she's really good about pulling that information for everyone.
I talked to someone. Monica let me talk to some lady, I cannot remember her name.
Okay. All right, well, Tara Crosby?
Yes.
Okay, I will pull your information in the morning.
Okay. Thank you.
Say again? I also don't remember going, but, oh, I don't remember, I don't, I don't know. But, um, Ms. Crosby, um, I know you probably don't want to hear it like this, but I know you look at the dollar amount, but if you get a chance, look at the usage. Because you went from T Moon to where you're at now. And the question isn't far as the system's going to look at, they're going to look at the, the system's going to look at the usage. So the question is, how much water are you using? Because your, your fire protection, your trash, all that's going to be the same. Only thing's changing is your water and sewage. So if your usage is changing, then your dollar amount is changing. Am I making sense? You see what I'm saying? So, so, um, when she, when she pulls the report, it's not going to pull up dollar amount, it's going to pull up usage. So the question is, how much usage are you using? So from one month to the next, is it the same or is it different? She's going to be able to tell you in detail when you are using the water and how much. So it's not going to be the dollar amount as much as it's going to be the usage. You see what I'm saying? So that, that's where, that's where we're at. When I look at it, I don't look at dollar amounts, I never, when you call me over, I never look at dollar amounts. I always look at usage. You see what I'm getting at?
But we do know it's four dollars per housing.
Yeah, I mean, I could do the math, but it's not really, I don't want to do the math. I just want to know how much water you're using.
At this time, we'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn to a regular council meeting. It's been properly motioned and seconded, all in favor? Poses. Call to order. The council is given the ability to remove the items on the agenda. After the clerk has read each item again, she, she expounded on them, but she will read them thoroughly again. And then we would like to entertain a motion to consider approval individually or collectively.
Approval of consent agenda. Consider approval of all items on this consent agenda, consent agenda minutes. Consider approval of minutes of council meeting of April eighth, twenty-twenty-five is received by all members. Adopt resolution number seven hundred forty to rename Devon Street to Willie J. Larry Street in honor of Mayor Willie James Larry. Resolution number seventy-four, seven forty. A resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Monazuma, Georgia to honor past Mayor Willie James Larry by renaming Devon Street to Willie James Larry Street for his years of service and devotion to the citizens of Monazuma. Whereas mayor and council of the city of Monazuma, Georgia, having the authority to name streets and roadways, whereas Mr. Willie James Larry is an honorable residence, resident and citizen of Monazuma, whereas mayor and council in honor of renaming Devon Street to Willie James Larry Street does so in recognition for his works and services to the citizens of Monazuma. Whereas Mr. Willie James Larry, in the capacity of mayor and of Monazuma and selfishly contributed and served the citizens of the city dutifully and with obligations, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Monazuma for themselves and the members of all departments of the city of Monazuma and for all citizens of Monazuma that we honor, Mr. Willie James Larry in that Devon Street is and shall be officially named Willie James Larry Street. So resolved this third day of June twenty-twenty-five. Adopt resolution number seven hundred forty-two. A general election will be held fourth day of November twenty-twenty-five at which a referendum will be submitted to allow registered voters within the corporate limits of the city of Monazuma to approve or disapprove the Sunday sales of on-premises distilled spirits, beer or wine where fifty percent or more of the gross income of the establishment is from the sale of food. Resolution number seven forty-two. Whereas the mayor and council of city of Monazuma, Georgia voted to submit a referendum to authorize Sunday alcohol sales of on-premises distilled spirits, beer or wine where fifty percent or more of the gross income of the establishment is from the sale of food. Whereas the Georgia General Assembly enacted OCGA section three dash three dash seven, which authorizes Sunday on-premises sales by rate pillars of on-premises sales of malt beverages, wine and distilled spirits under certain conditions and subject to a local referendum. And whereas a general election will be held fourth day of November twenty-twenty-five at which a referendum will be submitted to the voters registered within the corporate city limits of the city of Monazuma for approval or disapproval of Sunday alcohol sales on premises where fifty percent or more of the gross income of the establishment is from the sale of food. Now therefore, that the city clerk is directed to forward this resolution to the election superintendent of Macon County, Georgia and authorizing the call of the election and submission to the voters within the corporate limits of the city of Monazuma, Georgia. Preclarance by the Department of Justice is no longer required. So resolved by a vote. Approval of emergency expense. To approve the demolition of condemned buildings, one-eleven, one-thirteen and one-fifteen South Dewey Street. Per court order of March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, the city was directed to proceed with demolition due to unsafe conditions. The contract was awarded to low bidder Hunter Construction LLC in the amounts of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars for one-thirteen South Dewey Street. Budgeted one hundred and ten thousand for eleven, one-eleven South Dewey Street and one hundred and ten thousand for one-fifteen South Dewey Street. A budget amendment will be made to general fund. Approved emergency expense. To approve engine rebuild of fire truck number twelve, twenty thousand dollars. A budget amendment is made to fire fund in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Revised alcohol ordinance. To revise city of Monazuma alcohol ordinance, section ten-three dash E, ten-five A and ten-five C. Ten-three E, it shall be unlawful to allow admission to any minor who is under twenty-one years of age on the premises of any establishment serving on premise alcohol, premises alcohol after eight P M. Where alcoholic beverages are being consumed unless accompanied by a parent or guardian. This excludes restaurants that hold a business license for on-premises constru, consumption where fifty percent or more of the gross income of the establishment is from the sale of food. Section ten-five A, original has been struck and added a alcoholic beverages by the package. Licensees for the sale of distilled spirits by the package shall not engage in the sale of such beverages except between the hours of eight A M. and eleven forty-five P M. Monday through Saturday and on Sunday between the hours of twelve thirty P M. and eleven forty-five P M. Licensees for the sale of malt beverage and or wine by the package shall not engage in the sale of malt beverage and or wine by the package except between the hours of eight A M. And one A M. Monday through Friday. On Saturday between the hours of eight A M. and eleven fifty-five P M. On an, and on Sunday between the hours of twelve thirty P M. and eleven fifty-five P M. Section ten-five C was added. Alcoholic beverages by the drink, sale of any alcoholic beverages by the drink for on premises, on premises consumption. Licensees shall not engage in the, in the sale of any alcoholic beverages between the hours of one A M. and eight A M. daily, Monday through Thursday. All alcoholic beverages must be received by eleven P M. And all patrons must be out, out of the premises by twelve A M. On Friday, all alcoholic beverages must be received by one A M. And all patrons must be out of the premises by two A M. On Saturday, all alcoholic beverages must be received by eleven fifty-five P M. And all patrons must be out of the premises by two A M. Provided that this subsection shall not apply to private clubs here under and establishments holding a valid permit may be valid in accordance with OCGA three dash three dash seven or as may be amended from time to time. No alcoholic beverages by the drink may be sold on Sunday. Approved purchase of radio system for a police department. To approve the purchase of handheld radios and patch for the Monazuma Police Department. Southern Link will be the provider of, in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars and seventy-seven cent. A budget amendment will be made to squash.
Thank you, clerk. Counsel, a motion to consider approval individually or collectively? It's been properly motioned as second to consider collectively. All in favor? Poses? To, to approve the consent agenda. No, no, no poses? So move. Thank you all. Any other council comments? Any other public comments? Motion to adjourn? Thank you all very much.